All right, good evening and welcome to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting for January the 13th. We will now call this meeting to order and have a roll call. You do have to vote by hand. Please raise your right hand. All right, if everybody will please stand for invocation, Commissioner McGlaughlin.
Should we please be turned to God? First of all, we thank you. We thank you for life, health, and strength. The Lord has come by this meeting, helped us to make the decision that would be pleased until thee, in thy holy name we pray. Amen.
May I have you please welcome our student for the pledge, Addison Hardy from Aiden Griffin High School.
Good evening. My name is Addison Hardy and I'm a senior at Aiden Griffin High School and I am the school president and a member of Health Occupation Students of America and I plan to study nursing at ECU. At this time, will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for having me. You may be seated.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving along, we have approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion on second. Raise your right hand for approval. All right, Madam Manager. Do we have anybody signed up for public addresses to the board?
I have one person signed up, Malcolm Heath.
Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. A total of 30 minutes is set aside for public addresses to the board. Please state your name and address prior to speaking.
My name's Malcolm Heath.
If you'll please approach the podium.
My name's Malcolm Heath. I live at 4604 Dixon Road, Grimeson, North Carolina. I'm a part of District 3. There's been a lot of turmoil at the Leroy James Farmers Market over the last year, the last two or three years really, but I only know firsthand about the last year. My name's Malcolm Heath. As I said, a former vendor at Leroy James and a member of the Advisory Committee. Time is short, so I'll keep it brief. If you want full details, I've sent a few letters to your emails. I'm happy to document anything you want more information on. On January 9th, 2025, vendors were punished for disagreeing with county officials, retaliation for having a difference of opinion. Many of those who disagreed are no longer at the market, their application being rejected a few days later. Others were put in part-time status and are now afraid to speak for fear of additional retaliation. I'm a produce farmer and a plant nurseryman. 100% of my product is old-fashioned, organic, and agricultural. Half of last year, we had empty tables, nowhere little produce in sight at times. The market is closed in winter for a lack of produce vendors. Why then are active produce vendors being denied their applications? Farm inspections were promised by the beginning of January. Today is almost halfway into January and applications have been rejected. Why was my farm never inspected? Were other farms inspected? And if not, why not? How can we reject or accept without an inspection? I believe certain of county staff targeted people not unlike myself, people who have been at the market five or 10 years for daring to have an opinion. I believe they still... I believe they sided with one faction at the expense of another, giving technical advice as per their duty to one side while refusing to advise the other. I believe an act of corruption has occurred and I charge that county staff and the chair also knowingly violated GS 153A-52.1 and possibly GS 143-318.10 as well. If you guys have any questions for me, I've got documentation with me. I'm happy to speak to any of you afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item number seven, presentation. Can we have a motion to approve? Motion on second. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if we can go down front and Pam Strickland and any members of her team would come forward. Welcome. Pam Strickland is with Stop Human Trafficking Now and if you will introduce your team prior to my reading, the proclamation that the board has adopted.
Sure, thank you. Vanessa Bearman, who is our Training and Outreach Coordinator. Sheriff Paula Dance, who's a part of our multidisciplinary team. Mr. Mayor Dixon, who is on our board.
Excellent. Thank you all for being here and I'm pleased to read a proclamation entitled, Proclamation Recognizing Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month, January 2025. And it reads, whereas human trafficking involves recruitment, harbor, and transportation provision by or selling of human beings for their services of labor or commercial sex through use of force, fraud, or coercion. And whereas human trafficking violates basic human rights and deprives victims of human dignity and freedom. And whereas human trafficking is a national problem, with North Carolina being ranked number nine in the country for prevalence in human trafficking. And whereas the Pitt County Human Trafficking Multidisciplinary Team responds to local victimization at increasing rates. And whereas sex buyers are the reason that children and adults are being groomed and recruited by traffickers into the exploitative sex industry. And whereas our community must hold accountable those people who purchase sex, exploit workers, and those people who look the other way. And whereas the Pitt County Coalition Against Human Trafficking seeks to eradicate human trafficking by empowering organizations and individuals through collaboration, leadership, and training. And whereas NC Stop Human Trafficking, ECU Health, Daughters of Work, the Pitt County Sheriff's Office, the Grandville Police Department, the Center for Family Violence Prevention, and many other organizations are active members of the Pitt County Coalition Against Human Trafficking and Pitt County Human Trafficking Multidisciplinary Team. And whereas the Pitt County Board of Commissioners is committed to protecting people vulnerable to human trafficking and acting to end human trafficking by holding the sex buyers and traffickers accountable. Now therefore, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim January 2025 as Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month and commend its observance to all citizens. Adopted this the 13th day of January 2025. I'm Dr. Megan Holloman, Chairman of Pitt County Board of Commissioners. I'm going to attest it by coming here and being part of the board. Mr. Chairman, if you will present this to Pam Strickland. Picture, if you all want to squeeze on in. Perfect.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just add, one of the other things we're super excited about this month is that we are taking advantage for the first time of our new Emerald Loop lighting system. And so the cupola of the courthouse this month is lit blue as best we are able with the current system in honor of Stop Human Trafficking.
All right. All right, now moving on to item number eight. Madam Manager, you are up.
Okay, Evan. Your report this evening starts with your meeting dates. Remember, this is your only regular meeting in January. On the 27th, we'll meet at 8:30 in the morning for our capital improvement workshop right here in this room. And then you'll have two regular meetings in February on the 10th and 24th at 6:00 p.m. right here. Reminder that offices will be closed to January 20th in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Another reminder that on January 24th, which is a Friday, we'll do our legislative lunch with our North Carolina Legislative Delegation to review our legislative goals just prior to their beginning of their long session of this biennium. So we hope all of you will attend that event and we'll do that here in this building. For item D, on our opioid settlement, I see Caitlin Houston is here. She is leading three public input sessions on our opioid settlement funds and they'll take place January 27th, 28th, and 30th at 6:00 p.m. at Boyd Lee Park, Epps Recreation Center, and South Greenville Recreation Center respectively. If any members of the public have thoughts or ideas to share with our Public Health Department as they manage and administrate these opioid settlement funds, this is your opportunity to be heard. For item E, I would like to announce the names of those employees in Pitt County government who have reached Milestone Service Awards. We recognized them last Tuesday in a breakfast reception, but I wanted this board and those viewing to hear who has reached those milestones. So for five years of service, we celebrated Meredith Buck with detention, Asia Collins with social services, Grant Foster in the Sheriff's Office, Quodja Gilliam in social services, Lynnwood Hines in tax administration, Jared Holland in the Sheriff's Office, Valanda Howell in social services, April Jefferson in detention, Jared Lowe in public health, Sherry Elizabeth Milton in public health, Santa Moore in social services, Andrew Peeden in detention, Amy Pierce in detention, Lisa Poole in public health, Mashonda Pratt in detention, Deborah Raitano in social services, Deborah Savage in public health, April Smallwood in social services, Alicia Spicer in social services, and Taylor Tippett in animal services. Celebrating 10 years of service with Pitt County government has been Jackie Bunting in social services, Shannon Davenport in social services, Sonya Evans in social services, Christopher Sparrow in MIS, and Chiquita White in social services. We had five celebrating 15 years of service with Pitt County government. Marie Crockett in social services, Douglas Johnson in detention, Teresa Johnson in social services, Andrew Peel in the Sheriff's Office, and Robert Sowards in detention. We had three with 20 years of service with Pitt County government. Robin Abbott with the Sheriff's Office, Kimberly Hardy in the Register of Deeds, and Herbert Worthington in Solid Waste and Recycling. And then we had two 25-year service recipients, William Gay in detention and Samuel Johnson, we call him Eli Johnson, in the Planning Department. So we are grateful for the service of these employees. We recognized them last week. We had a fun breakfast reception where we reminisced what was happening in the world at the time they were hired and it was a good time and I hope they left feeling appreciated and a little bit lighter in their load that day. So those are your quarterly service awards. Item F was a report of legal settlement. As you know, anytime there is a legal settlement, the law requires the county staff to report that out at a public board meeting. So today I am reporting that the counties settled a workers' compensation claim with Wilson Stewart, who is a maintenance mechanic one in Buildings and Grounds, resulting from an injury on February 22nd, 2024, in the amount of $6,000 with a release of all claims. And so that is officially reported out and approved and within staff authority to have done that.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
I have one other item, if the chair will allow.
Go ahead.
We've had a request to provide a brief update on the farmers market.
Okay.
And let me pull that note.
Mr. Chairman, I've been asked to provide a brief report on the farmers market as the board has received several emails expressing concern from Mr. Heath, who you've also heard from this evening. I wanted the board to know that I did meet with Mr. Heath and other vendors on September 3rd last fall to address various concerns and spoke with him again by phone on January 2nd in an effort to address his procedural concerns with the Advisory Committee. I did attend the Farmers Market Advisory Committee meeting on January 9th to observe that meeting and I did want to share with the board that I am concerned about the volatility of the interaction between the Advisory Committee members, vendors, staff, and the public and the impact that that's having upon market operations and staff. Current concerns involve the market schedule, which this board voted on in December, which includes Saturdays and Tuesdays in season and monthly market days in January, February, November, and December, ultimately resulting in more market days than were offered last year. Based upon this year's data, further consideration may be given to opening additional days in November and December depending upon that data as we move through the year. 2025 vendors have been selected based upon objective criteria. PJ Andrews and Farmers Market staff would be glad to provide a written response or report answering any questions that the board may have if the board has any. And then just a reminder, the purpose of the Advisory Council is threefold for the farmers market. It's to recommend operating procedures for the market, recommend an annual budget to support the operation, and receive, consider, and act upon reports from the public, vendors, or manager. The county attorney did a training for the board this past fall to remind them of these duties and to update them on advisory board procedures. And I guess I'll just end this by saying the board is not functioning effectively in this capacity and this board might wish to consider an alternate structure, perhaps quarterly vendor listening sessions with the market manager rather than its current structure, but I'll leave you with that this evening. Answer any questions you may have.
Question what?
I don't really have questions so much as a comment. First of all, I just want to say that it is a privilege and not a right to be in the Leroy James Farmers Market. The space is designated for community use, not for private business use. The farmers market is also not for profit. The goal of the farmers market is to provide fresh vegetables and produce for the community. It is not the county's responsibility to compete with private business or to promote one private business over another. While the market was under the supervision of the Cooperative Extension, rules and policies were not being followed and enforced. Since the farmers market has shifted under the county umbrella, county staff has used data to drive the new schedule of market dates and to accept vendors, which by the way, I will say all of this was approved by the current advisory board. There are rules, policies, procedures, and most especially a code of conduct that must be followed to use a county facility. Again, it's a privilege and not a right. The role of the Advisory Committee is to advise on matters that represent the vendors. Obviously, with the latest comments and the manager's report, the advisory board is not functioning as it should. With all that being said, it is my recommendation and I'm ready to make a motion that we dismantle the advisory board and have the market manager and county staff give recommendations to the Board of Commissioners based on vendor and community input. And I'll even be willing to throw in there that we have quarterly vendor meetings where they give input to the market manager.
Hold on to your motion. Have it on floor. Commissioner Hodges.
You know, we received lots of emails from vendors, from the farmers market. I visit the farmers market quite often. I wonder, other county farmers markets, how do they operate? Do they have advisory boards? Do you know anything about any of the counties' farmers market operation?
So Farmers Market staff has done some extensive research, especially when we were comparing market days. In terms of structure, it varies across the board. There are some with advisory boards, there are some without. We could provide a more comprehensive report if we needed to. I can tell you, the services we provide and the market days that we provide are far more robust than any of our neighboring counties.
Madam Manager, the advisory board consists of a broad spectrum of the county?
The advisory board consists of seven members. Four are vend... Five are vendors and two are at large. And so those vendors may or... They are not selected broadly by district across the county now.
What else gives about?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In this, I wanted clarification on the purpose and the responsibilities of the board and then I have maybe a comment to follow up on it, but what are the three charges of the advisory board under the current structure?
According to the current rules adopted by this board, it is to recommend operating procedures for the market, to recommend an annual budget to support the operation, and to receive, consider, and act upon reports from public vendors and market managers.
Okay, so, and so I guess my comment is, over the last few years, as we've seen a transition in the farmers market and went from our former model to having a manager that's answerable to staff, it seems to me that we're caught in a position of overlapping responsibilities and it seems inefficient to pretend that... Pretend that we continue to do business as usual when it... We're not doing business that way anymore. And, and so, in my view, if we've hired a manager to run the farmers market and we have county staff that's competent to, to receive feedback, and of course, we are a board that can always receive feedback as well as we do, I would be more supportive of formalizing what we're already doing, which is, we have a manager, a market manager. It seems to be a market manager organization with a lingering vestige of the way that business was done in the past and I would prefer to see us move, move forward with our current arrangement. So as it, as it apply, I'll second the motion as it is necessary.
I just have a question to the manager. I'm sort of, I guess, in a position of not really knowing, so I'm asking this question. I would thought, I would think rather, that the farmers market should be open three, four days, you know, because of people coming, getting their vegetables, getting their necessities for home or whatever. And my understanding that, and I think we talked about this before, that the farmers market is only going to be open one or two days during, during the week. Personally, and this is my personal, I would think that that would not be enough. I would think that if people wanted to come to the farmers market, why wouldn't they have the ability or the time to, the days to do it, maybe three or four days a week? I mean, I haven't, I haven't gotten to, gotten to the point that I can understand why that's not happening, if you can help me with that.
I think part of the answer to that lies in the data, when the market was open multiple days per week. So for example, there was a time several years ago when the market was open Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And on Thursday, of the 28 or 26 booths available, there were one to two vendors present. And the public would come expecting a market and be disappointed because there was not a market being offered. They almost thought, you got me. Some folks may pay for transportation to get there and arrive and realize that there are no vendors present. And same was true on Friday, when we had those markets. And then last year, we added Tuesdays in the afternoons into the evening to see if maybe a weeknight was better for folks coming off work or picking up school from Wintergreen Elementary or Intermediate School. And the attendance of both vendors and the public was very minimal. So this year, we're modifying it to include a second day and a Saturday and to encourage vendors to honor their commitment to come. And if they do, I think the marker will grow in, grow in its success and then we can continue to add days depending upon the vendors' demand for the space and the public's demand for those goods. I think it's a, it's a moving target, but two years, when we did the renovations and remodeled the farmers market, it was to sort of rebuild and we're in that, with the new market manager and we're in that rebuilding phase. I think ultimately, it would be wonderful to get to a staffed market, exactly as you're describing, with multiple more days open. One of the things the current market manager has recommended for this year is to have regular vendors and then to have vendors, she's calling PRN vendors. And so if a regular vendor says, I can't be there on Saturday, she can call a PRN vendor to fill in that booth space. Or if she has vendors that say, I really just want to come twice a year when I have excess watermelon or squash or pumpkin, whatever the vegetable may or fruit may be, then she can say, you only want to come, then let's not tie up a full booth for you all year long and leave it empty on the days you're not here. Let's put you in a rotating booth, called these PRN booths, so you can come in when you want to. We have the core that's there every week and then we have rotating PRN to fill in when regular vendors can't come and to fill in the rotating space. In that way, we should be able to have more people committed to the market who may then be able to develop and sell on a more regular basis, which would then create the vendors and the corresponding demand for more market days. But we're just, we're just not there yet. We've had, for example, the market in December, of the 26 vendors, 19 said they were not coming. And so it's difficult to open a market and have folks come with certain expectations and then not deliver on those expectations, particularly when we are investing a significant amount of money in marketing and advertising for the market on radio, on social media, in print, and advertising who's going to be there. And then if we're not delivering what we're advertising that we're going to deliver, it makes a poor impression to the public.
Thank you.
There is a contract that the vendors do sign, correct?
Yes.
And in that contract, is there any type of layout on cancellation or no-show of the actual space?
Yes, and that contract, which requires vendors last year to pay approximately $5 a week for a full season and less this year, requires them to follow the market rules and code of conduct. And that does require notification if you're not going to be present so that we can adjust to keep the market full and it requires a whole host of expectations on how you sell when you're present. So for example, the market is open from 8 to 1 and we need folks who are going to be there from 8 to 1. And if you're not, that creates a gap. So if somebody shows up at 9 o'clock and your booth space is vacant because you come at 11, that would be in violation of the market rules.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second, but before we vote, will you please restate your motion?
Yes. That we dismantle the advisory board and have the market manager and county staff give recommendations to this board, the Board of Commissioners, based on their data, vendor input, and community input.
All right, all in favor, please raise your right hand.
Do you have a second?
Yes, you do.
Any opposed, like so? All right, motion passed.
Thank you, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Heath, you are up.
Good evening. Chairman Holloman, Commissioners, Manager Gallagher. This evening, I present the December Tax Collection Report. Fiscal year combined tax collection rate through December 31st, 2024, for real and personal property was 81.36%. The combined rate one year ago for real and personal property was 83.94%. The lower correct... Collection rate this year is due to not receiving some of our larger payments in before the end of the year. However, we expect all those payments to be paid, well, it's now past that date. They didn't go past, they went to December the 7th. And Pitt County continues to pursue all outstanding taxes, necessary remedies available through the North Carolina general statutes. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If not, it's my recommendation to approve the December Tax Collection Report as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion on second. All in favor, please raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Moving on to item number nine, item score consent. You approve? Got a motion on second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Jonas Heath.
Good evening, Chairman.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, County Manager. Have some good news for you tonight. We have completed the Oak Hill Streets improvements. If you remember, back in January of 2024, so just about a year to the date, we entered into a contract with Tripp Brothers Construction to perform street improvements in Oak Hill East subdivision. That contract was in an amount of $78,560.25. Since that time, the contractor has made the improvements necessary for the Department of Transportation to assume maintenance responsibilities, and the Board of Transportation has, on November 7th, adopted those roads and are now responsible for the maintenance of those roads. So, that brings us to what we have to do to close out this case. The total project actually came in under budget. The total amount was $75,539.70, which benefited 38 property owners within that subdivision. Therefore, the property owners are responsible for $1,987.88 over a 10-year period, which equates to $198.78 that they will be assessed. Here is just a map showing the, the roads, again, Turkey Oak Court, Willow Court, and Scarlet Oak Court are now the responsibility of the Department of Transportation. You'll see in the pictures, the road improvements have been made, and so therefore, staff is recommending tonight that we adopt the preliminary assessment role reflecting that amount of $198 to be assessed to the 38 property owners, and set a February 10th public hearing to formalize that request. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
If a property owner decides to just go on and pay their portion off, is that permitted?
Yes, that's my understanding from Russell Hill.
Is there an advantage or a disadvantage?
It's entirely up to the property owner themselves.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I'd like to move that we adopt the preliminary assessment role resolution and set February 10th's public hearing date to confirm the assessment role.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jennifer Linder-Cowell, come up and join us.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, County Manager Gallagher. I'm here to present a proposed amendment to rename and broaden applicability of the ordinance to regulate the utilization of the Pitt County Recreation Complex. This revision of the previous ordinance lists Pitt County Government as the sole responsible party of all outdoor facilities managed by the Department of Cultural Arts and Recreation. The regulations and rules associated with all outdoor recreational spaces owned by Pitt County Government are detailed within the documents that you have. In addition, a proposed update to the manual fees is recommended to establish fees for the reservation of outdoor spaces and programs managed by the Pitt County Cultural Arts and Recreation Department. It is my recommendation to approve a motion to repeal Facility Services Ordinance Number Two, adopt the amended Parks and Facilities Ordinance as Facility Services Ordinance Number Four, and add the new ordinance to the Pitt County Code of Ordinances. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve staff recommendation.
You got a motion, in a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Anybody opposed? Motion carries, rolling right along.
Thank you.
Sheriff, if you will join us, please. Good evening.
You all ready for me to start? I guess this is a...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it's a motion for the contract and budget amendment. The Sheriff's Office desires to enter into an agreement with the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, otherwise known as DHHS, and Well Path Recovery Solutions to provide restoration to capacity services for incarcerated individuals. DHHS is fully funding this Restoration Pilot Program to provide mental health services for inmates determined to be incapable, incapable to stand trial. These inmates have extensive wait times at the Pitt County Detention Center. As a result of the designated state hospital for Pitt County's catchment area, Cherry Hospital is at capacity. The Restoration Pilot will provide needed psychiatric services at PCDC to expedite the treatment needed for these inmates to proceed to trial. This agreement is for the Sheriff's Office to house a maximum of 10 participants in PCDC for the purposes of this program. NCDHHS will reimburse at a per diem rate of $180 per participant, per day, starting the first day, or starting the day the first participant is admitted into the program. DHHS has agreed to reimburse for a minimum of five spots regardless of programmatic participation. The remaining spots will be reimbursed based on participation in the program, and that is what is before you tonight.
Any questions?
Motion approved.
Second. Got a motion in a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Matt Gibson, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before you tonight, excuse me, is the approval of the Pretrial Services Expenditure Budget Amendment. The motion would be to, to approve the proposed Pretrial Services Expenditure Budget Amendment. So, as listed in the summation of information, in November of '23, this board did pass an ordinance to create a Pretrial Services Board. In March, they began, that board began working to establish some recommendations for this board. In July of '22, the annual report was submitted to this board. If you remember, Jessica Ireland, who's a consultant for the Center of Public Policy, submitted her report, did an excellent job of laying out what this pretrial program would entail, and more importantly, what the cost of this pretrial program would entail. This board, and I printed it off, approved a motion to adopt the recommendations and have the Pretrial Services bring back a detailed budget within available funds for approval. So, I believe these funds were already allocated, but this board would like, or wanted at that time, a detailed budget. That detailed budget is attached to your agenda. It lays out the specifics for that budget, and so today, we're asking for that budget or the expenditures to be approved, and for that budget amendment. I believe some from the Pretrial Services Advisory Board is present. The Honorable Ferris Dixon is here, and I believe the Honorable Judge Blunt as well, I'm sorry, I did not see him back there, are both here, and they can answer any further questions that we may have.
Any questions?
I snuck in.
He did that.
If y'all got any questions, be glad to address those. I think we, in detail, answered some questions last time that we were, we were here about this program, and we just, Mr. Dixon and myself, any opportunity that I have to come here before you, I'll take advantage of. We appreciate the support of the county, and y'all have been good to us at the courthouse. We try not to ask unless we need it, and this is a worthy, worthy program that hopefully will give us some opportunities and options to address people that are arrested on low level, nonviolent crimes, get them out of the jail, and hopefully get them some services to address some root problems and, and needs, and be mindful of those that are in the detention center that deserve more oversight and attention, so allow the sheriff to speak on, I mean, allow the sheriff to work on inmates that need, need to be there in a lot of these, that would qualify for this program, or those that are not the type of individuals that pose a, and hopefully, all of them will not be a type of individual that oppose any type of safety concerns to the community. Mr. Dixon is, is great to work with on this project and others, he's chairing our Pretrial Services Advisory Board. Mr. Gibson is on the committee, Commissioner McGlawn is on the committee, and we've been meeting regularly and are grateful for the opportunity and hope that you will approve the, approve the project. Mr. Dixon?
Just briefly, the, there are studies that show that for those who really don't need to be in for really minor offenses, the longer they stay in with those that do need to be there, those who are, do need to be there actually end up training the younger ones to do more violent or more offenses that would more likely require them to stay there. So, it's always a situation where you want to keep them out, if they're in the community and need services and want to work, keep them out where they can do that, versus leaving them in where they can be influenced by others.
And, and last, if any of you have any specific questions about this or any items, I'm going to answer any question you've got, Ms. Perkins-Williams, but I want to invite anybody else. If y'all have any concerns, you know, with the courthouse or things that you might hear, I think myself, Mr. Dixon, Mr. Kemp, our public defender, we're glad to answer those questions that, that you might have. Sometimes you don't get all the information that you might need, and we're glad to help clarify any kind of issues or concerns that you might have. All right, Ms. Vice Chair.
Thank you. How many members of the boards are there, and how many are females?
How many of, one more question.
How many members do you have on your board, and how many are females?
How many are female? We have, I know we have one female, we have a magistrate.
Yes.
That's a female, and I think the other members of the Pretrial Services Advisory Board, Mr. Gibson, seven total?
I think we have eight filled at this point.
Eight filled. We still have open, we still have vacancies.
You have eight people and you have one female.
We have one female.
Mm-mm.
Yeah.
And Jessica Ireland, who's leading the charge, is a female as well.
So, our consultant, our consultant is, is a female, she's not on the Pretrial Services Advisory Board. We do have, I think we have two, two vacancies, welcome applicant, is it two? Mr. Gibson?
Correct, so we have, we have two at large, that could be anyone in the community. We have a behavioral health that's still open, that could be a female as well, someone from Trillium or some other behavioral health entity.
Is there a background for those two at large people?
No, ma'am, so that would be submitted to this board, just like any other board, and then this board would decide who to fill that spot with. So, applicants would just need to submit their application to the clerk of court, and then, clerk of court, clerk of this board, I'm sorry, and then they would be presented to this board for recognition.
Thank you.
Be glad to entertain any, any suggestions that you might have.
I'd like to see some of the females.
I just have a comment. At our North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference, where we selected our goals for, for the organization, our county manager had an opportunity to speak on behalf of this program, and she did an outstanding job. She might want to add a comment.
You're lucky to have her, and we're lucky to be able to utilize her, so thank you.
So, that is one of, one of the goals of the organization because of, you know, of Pitt County's stand on, on that.
Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to approve budget as, as presented.
You got a motion?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to see more women on that board.
And if I may, just one moment while I'm here, I appreciate you having me. I want to commend the sheriff and her office for pursuing the pilot program that they're pursuing regarding mental health restoration within our jails, within our jail, local jail. It is a huge problem that is going on across the state, and currently, the people that are found incapable to proceed, that have capacity issues, they all, they all go to one hospital in eastern North Carolina to cherry, all of them, whether it's Pitt, Beaufort, Hyde, Dare, Currituck. That's the only hospital that takes people for capacity evaluation, well, capacity restoration, especially the violent individuals. So, everybody gets on a list to go to Cherry, whether or not they're in need of immediate or high-level hospital treatment, or whether they're on the other end and don't need the hospital care, but everybody gets on that list. The list is long, over a year sometimes, before they get in, when they get evaluated, and then get put on a waiting list and have to wait a long time in a local jail to get into the facility, and she didn't, like I said, it's a voluntary program, we're very thankful, appreciative of it, so they can go into our hospital, I mean, into our detention center now and treat some of these people locally and from the Pitt County community and adjacent communities without them having to get in a system that has a lot of backlog. So, I just want to let y'all know that we're supportive of anything we can do to help alleviate, you know, some of the pressures on our, on our system, and I think it's a great program. There's one in Charlotte, the only other one in the state's in Charlotte, and that one has worked really well to address some of the lower-level cases. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank y'all very much. Thank you, Sheriff.
I look forward to seeing more women on your board.
I think he kind of got that.
I heard you with my bad ear.
So, there is, he got it. All right. Number five, manager.
Number five is a reappointment to the Animal Services Advisory Board. It's being recommended that you nominate Kathryn Hasek-Meyer for reappointment to the Animal Services Advisory Board for a term expiring February 6th, 2028.
Pleasure to both.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Right back to you for number six.
And the next one are two appointments to the Greenville Planning and Zoning Commission. You have two applications for, for individuals who live within the extraterritorial jurisdiction, which is the requirement to serve in these two regular seats. These seats have been vacant for some time, and it is recommended that you nominate two individuals to serve as county representatives on the Greenville Planning and Zoning Commission, and then continue to advertise for a third alternate position which is available.
Pleasure to both.
To planning people.
Yes, and you only have two applicants to choose from.
Seems kind of subtle.
Well, let's take them.
Is that, could I have it in the form of a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion, do we have a second? Got a second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Commissioners comments, I'll start to the right. Commissioner Bryant.
I do not have a comment at this time.
No comments, Chairman?
Is it you?
Yes, I would like to thank the residents of Pitt County for improving the trash on over the road. It is not as bad as it has used to be, and I'm pleased that we seem to be maintaining a little better attitude about the, the way we present ourselves to the public as it relates to what we do with our trash. Every gas station has a trash can, keep it in the car until you get there, and we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Mann.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to bring up, I spent a little time over around Farmville and the western part of the county this past week or so, and talking with fire chiefs and leaders in the community, and I'm concerned that we're losing volunteer firemen, and that their ranks have dwindled, and I, I found out this weekend that the state has actually reduced the number of firemen from 25 to 15 that, that you can, must have in order to stay a, I guess, a certified fire department. Anyway, I think in the past, there, I know we have a request from Farmville to, to help with building a fire station, and I'm just concerned that we should, as a board, start looking at how to support our volunteer fire departments before the storm hits. You're going to see the same thing happen in the fire service as you did in EMS. The training requirements are high, the, most of the members at a lot of our rural communities, there was a time when people worked and lived in those communities, and now, most of the firemen work outside the community, so there are times in the day when there are not enough firemen at a particular day when there are not enough firemen at a particular community to fight a working fire, and they're sending mutual aid. I found this out during the safety meeting we had at Alice King Park, I was talking to Mr. Gentry about that. And now, a lot of times during the day, when a fire call comes in, they're not just only sending the one fire station, they're sending several for mutual aid, just to have enough men, you know, women, firefighters, to, excuse me, to deal with whatever's going on. So I'm just concerned, I'd like to see this board take a direction of looking for ways in supporting the fire departments and help be a part of the solution now, instead of playing from behind when it hits. And we have to really start laying out money to try to, because this, the fire service, the volunteers do a great service to this county, and it's important to our home insurance, even, you know, to have qualified and certified firefighting, they rate them according to how good a service they can provide. So it does hit the citizen's pocketbook if our fire departments start to fold up. So I just want to mention that. I'm a supporter of the volunteer firemen, and I'm a supporter of the EMS and public safety, of course. Been involved in it all my life, and I would really like to see us start taking a look at that in the near future. Thank you very much.
Commissioner McGlawnhorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just kind of want to concur to what Commissioner Manning was talking about, in reference to Farmville, Farmville Fire Department. We've had some extensive conversation, and certainly I've talked to Commissioner Manning about that. I think that we, as a board, might want to look into that service in terms of what we can do to help Farmville obtain a fire department this year. And I know there's some misconcerns about that on this board, but I think if there's a need, we should look at that need very seriously. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have three comments. The first one, to the workers of all of our 24 departments of the county, I say, thank you for your service to all the citizens of Pitt County in 2024, your dedication and your work in making Pitt County a leader in the state and the best in the east. And we look forward to your service in 2025. So Happy New Year to all of our departments and all the workers in all 24 of the departments across the county government. My second one is to recognize and honor the loss of outstanding Parks and Recreation Director here in the City of Greenville. Boardley was really an outstanding Parks and Director for the City of Greenville. He really promoted recreation across the city, so want to recognize him. And my other comment is to recognize and honor President Jimmy Carter, a man whose life exemplifies unwavering commitment to service, integrity, and humanity. As the 39th President of the United States, he worked tirelessly for peace, human rights, and global progress, leaving a legacy of diplomacy and compassion. Beyond his presidency, President Carter worked with Habitat for Humanity and the Carter Center, demonstrating his belief that every person deserves dignity and opportunity. His enduring dedication to serving others has inspired generations to seek justice and act with humility. President Carter reminds us all that leadership is about lifting others and leaving the world better than we found it. We celebrate his extraordinary contribution and the examples he continued to set for us all. I had the privilege and the honor of serving on the Pitt County Habitat for Humanity Board, where we built eight of five homes to promote its mission of building families, communities, and hope. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Manning?
No comment. Thank you.
Mr. Watt?
No comment.
No comment, rollin' right along. I do want to welcome, I think she's behind a pole.
Yeah, she's behind a pole.
Reverend Brown, thank you for coming and joining us tonight. Mr. Matt Gibson, if you will please read that statement to go into closed session.
It has been suggested this body go into closed session under the following grounds: one, to discuss matters relating to delocation or expansion of industries under North Carolina Journal Statute 14331811A4; and two, to prevent the disclosure of information that is not considered a public record under North Carolina Journal Statute 143318.
Do I have a motion?
Motion, got it, applause.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? All right, we'll take it to closed session in the back. No, welcome back.
Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the closed session minutes from September 16th, 2024.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Ms. Tim?
Yes, ma'am.
I think it's time to go. I think so moved.
Got a motion? In a second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Meeting is adjourned. Good night.